All right, council members. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. My name is Wanda R. D. Williams. I'm the chair. And all of councilor members, I call this meeting to get to order at 6:00 PM. Ms. Houston, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen?
President.
Ms. Bowers?
President.
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
President Williams?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. We now will move on to the vacation. Mr. Allen.
This time, if we could keep the family of Ms. Portia Jeter's entire family over the loss of their great guardian son in a tragic death, so we could just bow our heads and keep the whole family in our thoughts and prayers. And then also, as we head into this Thanksgiving holiday, certainly keep in mind those less fortunate than ourselves and the number of people that the temps get colder and those who don't have a home to keep themselves warm and food to keep themselves nourished. Just keep them all in our thoughts and prayers and bow our heads for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We now will move on to pledge allegiance. Mr. Madsen. Thank you, Mr. Madsen. We will now move on to communications. Tonight, we have Mr. Dan Miller, who is our treasurer, who would like to talk to council regarding an issue. You have the floor, Mr. Miller.
Sure, Michael.
How's that?
It's better.
Well, thank you. It's very nice to be here tonight. And as you know, I've been a big proponent of the city getting new software for accounting purposes, et cetera. And the city did select a software vendor and the city council has approved it, and that was B. Tyler Software. But as of now, the contract has not been signed. And I believe we have the opportunity to make sure that this is really the software that we want. As there were two main softwares and we had, they did not get the head-to-head comparison. And I would like to make sure that we do get that head-to-head comparison since we have the opportunity. We don't have the contract in place. And these are the only two softwares that really fit the bill for everything. And I did request that in the, in the run-up to the selection. But that request, I guess, was ignored or denied, but we never got it. And the, the decision was made by the administration with, the final decision was without input from either the Controller's Office or the Treasurer's Office. And the people that actually made the selection and that are going to be, won't be here to implement or use the software. So I think it's important that the folks that are going to be implementing it and using it are really convinced that it's the right one. And it may be the right one. I don't know. That's why I want to make sure we have a head-to-head comparison. And I just wanted to bring that to council's attention and see if that's a, something that they would agree with.
Any questions, council members? Mr. Majors?
Yes, thank you. So, so just, just one. So you're saying in terms of when they were, because this just came down to council as this was the company we were going to be looking to enter into an agreement with. So you're saying there was no consultation at all prior to that company being selected with the Controller or the Treasurer's Office?
There was none with the Controller's Office, so I'm told. With the Treasurer's Office, we were in on, originally, I think there were five or six ones that got, and we got a one hour or so, like a brief overview of each software, and then it was narrowed down to two to have the head-to-head.
Comparison.
Comparison, yes. And, and, and my understanding is the only, there were only two that really fit the bill, and that was Tyler and Edmunds. And we were in support of having the Tyler Edmunds head-to-head comparison. And then that's what I requested. And that's, but then we hadn't, there was no input after that from us. And, and there was no input from us on the final decision. So, so we never got what, you know, a real comparison to say, you know, these two are the ones and let's pick the one that's right for Harrisburg.
Okay. And then in terms of the Law Bureau, in terms of, so council, we said to go forward and, and, you know, start an agreement process with Tyler Technologies, and it hasn't been signed yet. So what?
The agreement has been negotiated. The contract was signed by the Law Bureau and the mayor. It is sitting in the Controller's Office, which is a ministerial act. So the, I would suggest, as we've done previously, that Tyler is now in a position where it has a binding right to the contract. It was vetted, it was scored, council reviewed it at a public meeting in the process and approved it after the vetting and scoring and selection. There was a committee that selected it. I wasn't on the committee. But, you know, from up until now, when the Controller advised our office he wasn't signing it, that was the first I had that there was an issue with it, was just, I guess, the end of last week. But the law in Pennsylvania is pretty clear. It's a ministerial act when you get down to the final approvals. The executive was there, the legal was there, and the process was there. And it was vetted and it was competitive process. But, you know, I think the real person to talk to about scoring would probably be Mr. Boardner. You know, his department headed this entire thing. So, and so he, he may have some insight that I am missing about what the process entail. I'm unaware of the players. I don't know Edmunds versus any other. So I don't know. I assume they submitted because you're saying it was down to those two. But I wasn't involved in that process. We just negotiated the process. The big last issue was actually about insurance and cyber fraud. That was, that was the thing that we had to get upped from them. That was, you know, the, the longest time at the end of the contract was to provide sufficient coverage to the city in case they were hacked in their materials. But from our view, it was done.
Okay. And then was anyone from the Treasurer's Office involved in the scoring?
No.
All right. Thank you.
And, and since there is no contract, Tyler will not give us any information at all. So nothing's been done. We haven't done anything. Nothing's going to be lost. They won't do it until there actually is a signed contract, which there isn't.
No question. I think, yeah, council member has a question.
Just out of curiosity, Dan, can you shed any light onto what flagged up for Charlie in terms of why he didn't sign it?
It just came to him, and we've discussed this, and so he hasn't signed it. And he had, they, they also were not involved in any input, and they do use the software. So they certainly would like to have some input.
I have a question. Thanks for bringing this to our attention this evening as the Bureau of IT a little bit is under the Building and Housing Committee. I was not aware of that. Madam President, are we at liberty to ask Mr. Boardner to review the process that was completed?
Yes, we are.
Mind, Mr. Boardner, sharing the review process that took place, just reminding everyone of how Tyler was the final selection?
There we go. Sorry. Good evening, council. So there was a group of us who evaluated the seven responses we got. There were four that we looked at. The committee felt that between Tyler and OpenGov, they were the two that were the best suited. However, once we got under the covers of OpenGov, we determined they couldn't do a lot of what we needed it to do. So we selected Tyler. And Treasury was in the demos we had with vendors. Controller's Office was invited but did not attend.
And, and to add to that, I mean, I think Steve told us right in the beginning, there were only two that would really do it, and that was Edmunds and Tyler. And when, and they've selected OpenGov. OpenGov does not do real estate tax billing. There was just no way we could even use OpenGov. So, so they selected, the committee selected one that, you know, really wasn't, we couldn't use.
We determined that.
So, so we didn't, so we didn't have the true head-to-head comparison. We have the opportunity. I think we can do it within 30 days. And I'm not saying that Tyler won't be the, the final selection. I just think it's important that the people that actually use the software and are going to implement it are convinced that, you know, this is, this is really the one we want to use.
I have a follow-up question for Mr. Boardner. How will, how will this question mark, I guess, impact the migration process?
It will significantly impact it.
Because I know the way that you have it broken down now, it's a phased transition, correct? So this would, should we?
It would delay everything.
Okay, thank you.
How long do you think it would do? Just 30 days?
Well, just, let's assume we went with Edmunds. We're now starting contract negotiations, which could take months. We have been told by Paychex or payroll vendor that we have to be off of our current platform by October of 2022. Otherwise, we gotta move to their new platform, which will require more work in HR every payday.
I think, I think, Steve, that we are not going to say no to Tyler, but I think we need to be very, very careful when we utilize their services since they had a cyber attack and how they handled that attack. So we need to do a little bit more investigation.
We did. I was aware of that, and it did not impact their customers.
Well, it did impact some customers because important information was given out with those customers and that.
It was their corporate.
Right. It was disseminated out, and so I know, I just needed to personally know that our information here at the city is going to be safe.
Correct.
And I'm concerned, when I heard that, I was very, very concerned.
And I made.
And how they handled that. And we need to know how they handled that if that would happen here, if they would have another cyber attack here.
Correct. And I did make the Law Bureau aware of that.
Okay. And what was the response from Tyler when you asked that question?
They informed me that it was strictly their corporate data, not their customer data. They are segregated within their company.
Can you just check that out? Because I was given the information that it was their.
Okay, I can.
Personal data was given out, and it was very concerning.
Okay, I can look.
And I need to be sure that, you know, it doesn't happen again.
Right.
And I'm not saying that Tyler's not the company that we should go with, but I want to make sure that we, before we go with them and they handle our pay, payrolls and they handle the personal information of all of our 500-plus employees, that it doesn't happen again. And I want to know how they're going to handle it if it does happen.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, council members?
Just, just one follow-up. Mr. Boardner, the Treasurer keeps mentioning another company that was not scored in that final two.
Correct.
I guess, without giving them too much information. Where, where was that other company in terms of your selection process? You said there were seven entities.
They were the numbers.
They were number three. Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is anything else, Mr. Miller?
No.
Okay.
I don't know. Can we, how do we proceed from here? I don't know what have.
I just need, well, okay. Let me just be, you know, very honest with you. I am going to be in conversation with Mr. Boardner tomorrow, and I want to see if he's comfortable with information that he requested from Tyler Technologies. Okay?
Okay.
Then I'll let you know. And then I'll let, and of course, I'll make sure council is made aware of the response from the Tyler Corporation, especially Ms. Bowers, who is the chair of that particular. Thank you.
Well, since you're here, are you able to stay and answer a few questions about the Treasury during the pandemic? Or would you rather wait till we have the budget?
I can answer questions, but, but I don't know if that's what you want me to do.
If you have one, then, you know, questions that she may have, starting the Treasury, the opening of the Treasury Department.
Yeah.
I think I made an announcement last week, but you can also reaffirm everyone, you know, your, your recommendation of what you would like to see.
Okay. Did you want to ask me a question?
Well, yes. So, because one of the things that kept happening a lot over the last two years was just the inability to pay online. And then because the hours were short and the credit card machine was inside of the building, like people couldn't really pay their bills if they wanted to use the machine or pay online. So like the parking tickets for street cleaning, that data was never entered into. So if you had a parking ticket, you couldn't really pay for it online. So your only choice is to come in, the time, times are limited. But also, the company that we use for, that you call us, has like the name of several cities, and it doesn't even mention ours. So it took me a while to figure out that that was our company that you would use to call to pay when the system isn't working. So like, can you talk a little bit about like the systems that are in place and where they kind of worked or didn't work during the pandemic? And then like also, you know, like the reasoning for the hours during the pandemic? And I guess more so this year because during the pandemic, the height, it was, you had to close a lot more.
Well, we did close for the pandemic and had one. I mean, you know, the safety of our employees and staff is, is so, is important. The other thing is, we do have a lockbox. And, which means, you know, anybody who comes in and if, if we're not open, they can put the ticket and the fee right in the lockbox. It gets processed the next morning. So that's available, it has been available. So I don't think that would be, make anything an issue. You know, as far as online, I'm not 100% sure exactly what's happened with those tickets. But basically, it's the, the software, and this comes to a software issue, was selected by the police department without coordination of Treasury. So that software does not interact, you know, interact with us, so it can't be uploaded. So we don't have the tickets on there. So if you come in to pay a ticket, we don't have that information. And so, you know, we don't know what, you know, we can't process that. So they are, I think they're, I can't talk to the solution on that. I know Saya is working on that and the police department. And, and so there are, we're trying to get a solution to that.
How, how long has that been a, a problem? Because I didn't notice it until I had to pay online because I was bumping up against the higher fee, which I ended up going over. But I was trying to be quick, and that's when I realized the whole, how kind of messed up the whole system.
Yeah. It's been, I, you know, I think it's been about five months or something like that.
Five months.
Yeah. I mean, it's, that's why software is so important. I mean, it all, you know, has to integrate, it has to be the right things, has to work with us, and that's why we, we should be involved in those decisions.
The vendor that takes the credit, the payments when you call, when is their contract up for renewal? Like, are there other vendors that we?
That, that one is, I think, pretty good. We, I think it's, aren't we paying $1 generally, I think, is what, what the fee is? There is, I know this new fee for the police is $3, and we're very concerned that people will not want to pay online and pay the additional $3 fee to that vendor. So, I mean, we are happy with the vendor that we have as far as the fee goes.
So the, so the ticket online, so like when, if I were to pay, I mean, I can't pay, but if I were to pay the ticket online, the fee would be a dollar?
If it's through the current vendor we use in the city, if it's through the vendor, I think that the police department has, that's, then it's $3.
So when you call the phone number, is the phone number with the $1 vendor or the $3?
I think that's with our vendor. When you call right now and you go through the process. But the, I think the police one is where, you know, you get your ticket, you're out there, you see the ticket, you go right online immediately and pay. That would be with their vendor. If you're calling us, I think you're getting our vendor.
Okay. Because I, you know, I found that, to be honest, a little problematic because I, like, you call and they give you like four or five cities. And then if you want to pay for someone else, for anything, you know, where the anything else, I think. So it sounds like it's not a real, it's a real thing. You know, so there were a few times where I was like, I don't know if I'm calling the right place. But they did get ahold of a person eventually, and they were like, yeah, you're calling.
Well, I do hope that, you know, when we get new software, lots of things are going to be much smoother. And you'll be able to do things online. This, you know, we're, you know, we're in dark ages and we need something much better, either of these softwares. So I think those are going to be positive things in the future. Hopefully, they will be soon.
And is there anywhere that the credit card machine, I guess there are security issues that shifted from inside to outside so that people can use that if they're not, when the office is closed?
You know, I'll have to look into that. I don't know why that, I thought we had one outside before. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and I haven't walked back there in a while.
Mr. Miller, be free to leave. Would you please just, again, give the times and dates of when the Treasury Department will be open?
Yeah. Starting December 1st, we're going to be open on Tuesdays and Wednesdays with the same hours. Is it 8:30 to 2:30 that the city is open?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry. We're going to use this, this same hour. And we are going to be taking cash now.
Oh, okay.
So, so, so people are, you know, if they come with cash, they, we can all accept that. And that we still, I mean, what, what we do like to, to throw out there is that there, you can mail things in. We have ACH payments. We have many different ways. People don't have to come down to the city. And if they do come down and the door is, and we're not available, there's a lockbox. So you can just put your ticket in there, you can put your bill in there, your check in there, and go on your way. And we'll process that, and everything will be fine.
Before you go, one question.
Yeah.
Mr. Majors. Mr. Miller had requested that we look at annual billing again. That's something that you would like to see.
So we have been in correspondence. I don't believe we will have enough time via our calendar to get something done by the end of 2020, of this, this legislative session. I can say the most recent draft is in a better position than things were when we were talking about this last year and then the year prior. I think the number one goal as Public Works Chair was to ensure that our residents weren't at risk of losing their house, their homes if we were going to go down this route because eventually you would end up going to the county to do a potential lien, and their house could potentially be up for sheriff's sale for, you know, not paying a trash bill, which, so I think we can continue to explore ways to improve our collections. If we are looking to reduce costs, one thing that I know we can do currently without, and changing anything right now, is go from monthly billing to quarterly billing for our residents for paying their trash bills. That's on the books right now that can occur. That'll save 75% in just mailing costs to the, to the city. As we talked about, we're all been talking about is updating our IT so we can get things, be processed easier online. I personally pay my trash bill online, but if we can make the system a little bit more, you know, customer-friendly, we can move to, hey, maybe I can get an e-bill and then so much what we get for some of our other utilities. So we can start to reduce costs there, and hopefully that'll also work to increase the collection rate of our trash bill. So not opposed to the idea, I just don't think right now where, where we stand in terms of the dates we have left on our account will be able to get it done before the end of 2021. And if we're going to have it, it would have to be, wouldn't be ineffective. Even if it were to get done this year, I wouldn't want to spring that on residents from January 1st that they have an annual bill due and would have to be paid within, you know, four months. So not opposed to the idea. I think it's something that we can explore, but there are other steps that we as a city can continue to take to try and make sure we can improve our collection rate. I know that's one of the issues that the ICA and others have brought up in terms of our, our trash bill and our annual collections.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Is that okay, Mr. Miller?
Well, I, I know time is tight. So, yeah, we should do it in appropriate manner. And so, and we are communicating.
Yes, we are.
So I think we'll get on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, council, moving on to courtesy of the floor. At this moment, I start from my right. Anyone who would like to speak to council, please do so now.
Good evening, council. Pam Parsons, 18th and Holly Street. Just like to let you know that the citizens who are looking into illegal dumping and hauling are continuing to identify sites, photograph them, and look into who, who owns the property. The vast majority of what we're finding is that the trash is construction or industrial-type trash or tires, which could also be from a business as opposed to an, an individual. Some of the questions that aren't yet answered, I noticed that you will be looking at 2101 North Sixth Street Hudson Building. There are issues around that building with where the debris has gone and who appro, who approved the dumping of the debris on redevelopment authority property. In addition, questions about the beach house and where that construction debris has gone remain unanswered. There is a site on Bailey Street, which contains a lot of sand and debris that could be from the beach house, but we do not know that. But that is another question to be answered. And in addition, as we've been doing this, we've also been noting where construction is happening. Are there building permits and other things that are in order for construction or demolition to continue? And that's not always, that's not always the case. On 2801, there was a, only a demolition permit posted. It was out of date. And I have not been by this week, I will be honest. But I, I don't know if the building permit has been posted. But as of 10 days ago, there was not one available for the public to view. Thank you.
Ms. Parsons, if you have a minute, please. Now, the citizens are looking into this illegal dumping. What are you doing with that information? Copy of photos or data that you received? Do you forward that information to the Code's Office?
That will be done along with the, some things will also be shared with the county as well as the DEP. And there's a couple that we, that people have also filed federal complaints with the EPA.
Yeah. I would, I would appreciate it if you would, your citizens would, would give that information to the Code's Office so that they can immediately look into that illegal dumping. Also to Mr. Spriggs, who is now the director out there at Public Works. And as far as the building permits, I would suggest that you contact Mr. Mike Hughes to let, let him know that there's no building permits in those certain areas.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone in the middle, please? Anyone to my left? Thank you. We will now move on to approval minutes. Council members, approval minutes for the legislative session of November 9th, 2021. Is there any admissions, deletions, or corrections?
Yes, I have a few corrections.
Okay.
First, under courtesy of the floor, the third bullet point. I believe Ms. Melanie Cook's name is spelled wrong. There's an E on the end. I don't, I think it's just C-O-O-K. The second one is under new business, under the third bullet point, the second sentence. It should read, she announced in past tense. And then the final revision, 10:00 AM.
Do you have those corrections, Ms. Houston? Okay, they will be made. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any additional corrections, deletions, or admissions? Okay, with that, with those corrections in mind, minutes will stand approved. We now move on to reports of committees. We have none. Moving on to ordinance of first reading, Ms. Houston, please read Bill 18 to 2021 into record.
I actually do have a report from the last meeting, President William.
Oh, you do?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Houston, you did have that on?
I, I had it on, the updated one. So Kirk, you gave me a O1.
I'm the president.
You gave me a O1. I'm. Kirk gave you, I'm sorry.
He's not here. Let's blame it on Kirk. Blame it on Kirk. I apologize. Ms. Green, go ahead with your report, please.
Thank you, President Williams. During the work session of November 16th, 2021, the public the Public Safety Committee discussed Bill 13, 2021, and Bill 15, 2021. Bill 13 is an ordinance amending Chapter 13-141, Disabled Parking in Residential Neighborhoods of Title III Public Safety, providing for technical amendment thereto regarding reserved disabled parking and providing for related technical amendments to the traffic code. This essentially updated the language to include backwards issued by Penda as an acceptable display for handicap parking before it was only listed as handicap license plates. The solicitor noted that a technical amendment was needed to remove lines 74 through 79 as it included a fee that's no longer applicable. And this would also update the numbering and letters from, since, once the lines are removed. I would ask that my colleagues vote in favor of this bill and the suggested amendments. Bill 15 of 2021 is an ordinance updating Chapter 2-707 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Harrisburg, governing the police retirement system to approve technical amendments and incorporate the methodology for calculating final salary to assure compliance with certain Internal Revenue Services requirements for governmental pension plans. There were questions by council members regarding language in the bill and if it gave too much discretion to the mayor. The city solicitor noted that the agreement is something that was passed by city council as a contract with Resolution 68 of 2020. If this bill was not to be passed, the amount would need to be paid upfront by the city for the qualifying persons that would respond, excuse me, would retire. The council asked that we be provided with information about how much the city would be required to pay upfront if this bill were not passed, as long, along with advantages of those who may have retired in the last year may have been given, the others were not have been given. And would also like to look a little more closely at Resolution 68 of 2020. I am asking that this be revisited at our meeting on December 7th after we have received the information requested. This concludes my report for this evening. Thank you, President Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And no, have we have any correspondence on how much in the retirees would be paid upfront if we were to amend this bill?
It's not the retirees, it's the taxes.
Okay.
And so I don't have that because of having less and less finance people. I will get what we had as the original numbers.
My understanding, there's two, there's two problems with this bill and that was one of the problems along with the taxes. Had a meeting the other day.
There were, there were two, I'll, I'll get to the two reports we discussed.
Okay.
That were the two options. I've had a handful of that.
I'll be available next week.
And, and the council who prepared the legislation and responded to the RFP will be available on 7th to speak to the council.
Okay, thank you. They'll be here on the 7th?
Yeah, tax.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on now with ordinance of first reading. Am I, do I have the right agenda now?
Yes.
Bill, is it Bill 18? 21, Ms. Houston. Please read it into record, please.
Bill 18 of 2021 is an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the City of Harrisburg for the year 2022.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Bill 19.
Bill 19 of 2021 is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Title V Licensing and Taxation, Part V Real Estate Taxes, Chapter 5-501 Property Tax by establishing for the year 2022 a tax levy on land and improvements and providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assessed and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the state due and attributable to the year 2022 tax levy over the tax due and attributable to the 2006 tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
That also would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. We now move on to Bill 20 of 2021.
Bill 20 of 2021 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisburg establishing a new Part 2-1100 of the Codified Ordances of Harrisburg entitled Responsible Contracting, establishing a governing threshold, providing for the adoption of certain procedures related to the solicitation and award of certain public contracts within the city, providing for certification requirements for certain public contractors, providing for certification requirements for subcontractors on certain public contracts and providing for certain public contract review procedures.
That also would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. We now move on to ordinance for amendment. Bill 13, 2021. Ms. Green, I understand we have an amendment?
Yes, the amendment to Bill 13, 2021. I have to move for the minute?
Yeah, you have.
I would like to make a motion to amend Bill 13 of 2021 and remove line 76 through, it looks like, 81. And then to re-letter it to make line 74, letter B. Line 82, letter C. Line 84, add letter D. And I believe that's it.
Have a motion for amendment of Bill 13. You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments on the amendment? Here and now, please call the vote. All right.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Bill 13 of 21, as amended passes, no, just amended passes, excuse me.
Thank you. Moving on for final passage for Bill 13, 2021, as amended.
Okay. Bill 13 of 2021, as amended, an ordinance amending Chapter 3-141, disabling, disabled parking in residential neighborhoods of Title III Public Safety, providing for technical amendment thereto regarding reserved disabled parking and providing for related technical amendments to the traffic code.
Any additional questions on the amended bill? Comments? Here and now, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Bill 13, as amended, passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Moving on to resolution, Resolution 85.
Resolution 85 of 2020 is a resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg to adopt a comprehensive plan in accordance with the Pennsylvania municipality's planning code.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 85, council members?
Just a quick comment. I know that we had discussed attaching an ordinance to the legislation that council would review it every year, discussing it with the law bureau. Since we'll have a new council coming in and establishing several best practices, we thought it best to make those determinations on the ordinance while having those discussions as well. A lot of that will touch on and overlap around scheduling. I'll touch on that piece, but it will be my recommendation as chair is coming into the next year that we draft an ordinance that council reviews it before going to budget negotiations with the administration.
Wouldn't you like to make an amendment on that? I would think that you wouldn't want to, because you, you're going to pay, wait a minute, Mr. Majors. You want to pass this without making, you know, you want those recommendations, but you want to pass this now without making those recommendations. You'd be close with that?
I don't think, well, I don't believe coming into next year that it would be much pushback from council to draft the ordinance. I mean, you're right, the cautious thing to do would be to do that now, but I, I believe that council, as we are reorganizing and restructuring new leadership, can accomplish getting this work done.
Okay. What do you think, Mr. Robert?
As we're recognizing you have a resolution in front of you.
Right.
It would be an entirely different piece of legislation.
Exactly.
The clock has run out for the year.
Right.
Um, and, and we had discussed with Mr. Madsen, you know, his conditions of that. And I believe recommending the planning bureau look at the Penn State studies as part of any implementation of the comprehensive plan provisions going forward, which all the council can certainly place conditions on the motion for approval than what their expectations are, both, you know, to have ordinance come for review with the budget and to have those, the planning commission, the planning bureau, take those into consideration in the Penn State study that was done. If you attach them, you get two substantial amendments and then you delay the vote on this.
Okay, so we'll, we can do that next year. Okay. So I just want to make sure that we were within the legal bounds of.
I think, I think the good thing to say is this is the beginning of a process. We're going to end this long road. The conference plan begins.
Right. I mean, I'm, I agree with that. I agree with that. Okay, Mr. Madsen, is any other comments?
That's it.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay.
Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. I would like to thank the members of the Planning Commission for all of their time and attention given to the comprehensive plan. I would also like to thank the members of the Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan Work Group who have met on a weekly basis to discuss the plan. And finally, I would like to thank Chair Madsen for your leadership in hosting the three virtual comprehensive plan discussions, two in-person comprehensive plan discussions, and for extending the comment period. Thank you all for your time and attention, again, given to the plan. I would like to note that I'm disappointed by the administration, their lackluster effort to gain commentary on the plan once available in September of 2020. The administration seemed happy to report that they had received 10 responses from September 8th, 2020 to date. They were quick to remind council and the residents of their valiant efforts in June of 2016, November and December of 2016, and 123 events that were over nine months, which would bring us to September of 2017. My issue is with access. I do not think the city provided adequate access to the plan once the draft was completed. I understand the COVID-19 pandemic may have put a damper on plans, but that's when you pivot. One method to assist residents in digesting this 246-page document was to provide a one-pager, maybe an infographic, including a summary of each chapter, highlighting the key issues, goals and actions. I don't understand how a document is supposed to accurately reflect the city today when the majority of the public engagement is already dated and occurred five or six years ago. The plan is supposed to reflect the city today while meeting the city's future needs over the next 10 years. The process for this comprehensive plan began in 2014. Again, I don't understand how this five-to-six-year-old plan that no one really understands will work for the City of Harrisburg. I do not believe this document works for the residents of the City of Harrisburg. As a result, I will be voting no on Resolution 85 of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any other additional comments? Here and now, please call the vote, Ms. Houston.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Madsen, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Resolution 85 of 2020 passes.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Moving on to Resolution 80 of 2021.
Resolution 80 of 2021 is a resolution appointing Mr. James Hobbs to serve on the zoning hearing board of the City of Harrisburg.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 81.
Resolution 81 of 2021 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development plan to rehabilitate the existing building on the principal parcel at 2101 North Sixth Street into a mix of uses to consolidate 13 existing parcels into five distinct lots and to develop vacant lots in the adjoining block.
And that would be placed in Community Economic Development Committee. We now move on to O Business, council members. Are any O Businesses to speak?
Just, just one quick note. Do want to thank Chair Madsen and the community at large and everyone who worked on the comprehensive plan. Also want to thank the Planning Commission. I know how difficult of a process it's been for us all to go through over the last seven to eight years when, you know, when this was first thought up to redo after not having touched a plan in over 40 years. So I, I know the, the challenges that we all faced as we were trying to get through this document. The one thing that I am, I'm happy about though is that we did see passage of it so that it can continue to be worked on. I do not want, I, I don't believe it's this council or even with a, a new council coming in in January, as well as a new administration, that this will document will sit on the shelf as the previous one had done for over 40 years. I think that, as we discussed previously, putting an ordinance in place, which we had all talked about doing, to revisit it on an annual basis, will make sure that this document actually is a living document and is something that we can move forward and, and, and shape and mold each year, you know. Previous councils have sat on these kind of plans and I think this council has been very proactive in showing that, hey, what we received wasn't the best. We wanted to get as much input as we can. Made some changes, but we know that moving forward, this is something that we can change and, and give community buy-in and work on piece by piece as we go through and try to make our, our community a better one. So I appreciate all the work of everyone on this, this council and I am at least glad we're able to get something on the book so that we can start moving forward and know that this is something that is going to be one of the first items that a new council takes on to ensure that is something that we continue to get input from our community. And I hope that we work with community groups who have been doing a lot of the hard work and light work in our community to have those kind of conversations along with the members of council. And I am hoping that 2022, we aren't all wearing masks and we can get together and actually have a lot more community dialogue as a member, as council to the community and the community back to us, not just here in this chamber, but as we had done prior to COVID and even during COVID, you know, finding, you know, new ways and, you know, being more nimble to get out into our community and talk to people. So whether it's going to be Zoom or I, I really hope we don't have to use Zoom or Teams or anything else anymore, but in person in smaller settings so that we can, you know, have those kind of conversations moving forward. But really want to thank everybody for all the hard work that has been done over the last seven years. I remember, you know, going to those meetings back in 2014 and 2015. And where it is, isn't the best, but it is way better than what we had from a 40-plus old year document. So thank you to everyone in our committee for where things are and look forward to, you know, future dialogue with the new administration on this on a annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Anyone else, please?
Yes, President Williams. I would like to say thank you to the citizens of Harrisburg for participating in the comprehensive planning process. Thank you to my fellow members of the Planning Commission for the countless hours and steady going over this plan over and over again. I remember when I first joined the Planning Commission back in, I think it was like 2015, somewhere around there. We were just kind of getting started and I had no idea really what a comprehensive plan is and, and they really just took me under their wings and, and we made it through the process. Through, uh, through the political turmoil, you, we never let the, the comprehensive plan itself become political, whether it was being threatened by the mayor to get rid of the entire planning commission because what had become, he wasn't satisfied with the document. Whether it was the, the battles with, um, the consultant, having to switch consultants from the original revised documents to getting the original, original document, so going over that again over and over and still trying to make for sure that we got the input of the, the citizens of Harrisburg before we got it to this point. So understanding it was a long process, that some of the information, most of the information is dated. We kind of laugh at the fact that, you know, this, this plan's date changed plenty times. And although it's the 2020 plan, the information is quite dated right now. But I look forward to making this a living document that we continue to update and upgrade and continue to get the, the input of the citizens, the way that, uh, we've really embraced technology over the last year. I, I hope that it will be a lot easier to get the citizens' input, whether it's a, a constant place on the website where people can go in and just give their input on what they'd like to see in the city. You know, as we're having conversations about the ARP money, we can incorporate some of the things from the document or things that now we, we realize might be vital to our city, such as accessible internet connection, because when a pandemic hit, we realized how much we needed those things. So I think it's something that even if this plan would have been done last year, we'd need to revisit it again because so many things have changed and they'll continue to change. But with the technology we have, I think we can make it a lot more fluid. And with the dedication of the council that we have and the council that I look forward to working with in the future and, and the mayor that I look forward to working with in the future, I think we will make for sure this stays up to date and, and the forefront in guiding our path as a city and a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Anyone else? Okay. I certainly concur with all my council members, but I want to say also thank you to all the council members for all the hard work that they also put into the planning. And I certainly will look forward to working with you guys next year to make sure that we try to implement this comprehensive plan. Moving on with New Business, council members. Any new business?
Yes, I have two notes of congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. The first is a congratulations to the Bureau of Information Technology on their recent Shared Award, .com Gold Award with Gavin for the redesign of the city's website. The .com awards are an international. website. The dot com awards are an international awards competition which honors excellence in web creativity and digital communication. Gavin is the vendor that redesigned the website and created a new logo. The city's new website is definitely more user-friendly. I just wanted to thank everyone who contributed to the redesign. Congratulations to the Bureau. Thank all the residents that participated in our surveys, um, and all the council members that shared their input, uh, from what other cities were doing. The second note of congratulations is to the Harrisburg Cougar Football Team.
Oh, yeah.
Mid-Penn Commonwealth Champions, District Three, Six A Champions. Congratulations to all of the players and coaches. Best of luck as you continue your quest to the state championship. Please know that the city supports you and we're so proud of you. Thank you.
Wow, thank you, Ms. Bowers. Anyone else for new business?
Uh, I have some new business. Um, there will be a holiday home decorating contest. LS Community Investment is sponsoring a holiday home decorating contest. Cash prizes will be awarded for first, second, and third place entries. Judging will be conducted during the following periods. Uh, Penbrooke's, oh, we'll just get to Harrisburg, is, uh, December twelfth to December twentieth. Uh, the application deadline for all locations is November twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, for applicant con, contact, lscommunityinvestment@aal.com. And then there is a website, www.lscommunityinvestments.com. Folks can check out and compete.
Okay, Mr. Madsen, thank you. Any other new business, council members? Okay, we're here and done. I just want to take this opportunity to, to wish all of our residents and everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. In conclusion, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Meeting is officially adjourned.